I'd like to call to order the January 12, 2015, meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dallow?
Here.
Mr. DeSico?
Here.
Ms. Cassali?
Here.
Mr. Bernardi?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Oppone?
Here.
Mr. Vier?
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. First, let me welcome our newest member, our newest old member, our newest oldest member, Phil Turner, back to the Planning Commission from an 18-year hiatus.
Yep. Thank you. Glad to be back.
So he's now here to tell us all the things that we're doing wrong, so looking forward to it. Okay, next item is approval of the agenda, general corrections.
So moved.
By Dalu, support by DeSico, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of the minutes from the December 8, 2014, meeting.
So moved.
Support.
By Moore, support by DeSico. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, this evening, we've got four main items. The first one, revisiting a site plan that was presented to us last month, I believe it was. Justin Kalphus, Snappy Auto Service, Site Plan Number 14-39, requesting a non-conforming use. The applicant or representative this year, if I get your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Pete Snyder from Urban Land Consultants, 8800 23 Mile Road. Happy New Year. Again, as the chairman already pointed out, this is a continuation of a tabling from December 8 of last year. To refresh your memories, and for those of you who weren't there, the site's on the north side of Crawford, on the east side of Van Dyke. It's just a little bit over an acre. The site has a old, sort of a light industrial-style masonry block building on it with some gravel parking area, gravel, we'll call it vehicle access area in the rear, meaning the east side, and then some paved parking in the front, as well as a couple of sort of outbuildings. The proposal, as was presented last month, remains the same. The applicant is Snappy Auto Service, and they would like to be allowed to occupy that site as a legal non-conforming use, a Class A non-conforming use. Based on the comments and the discussion from the Planning Commission last month, we made some changes to the plan. The changes, the biggest one, of course, is adding a green belt on the east line. There's some evergreens, some proposed evergreens, a mixture of tall and short to sort of screen the screening fence, so to speak, and that's on the 10 feet immediately abutting this parcel, which is owned by the same property owner. There are some other changes as well, including reducing the fence height from eight feet down to six feet. Again, it'll still be screened, you know, with the screen slats. And also, we listed certain things on the plan that your planner suggested go on there, such as the hours of operation. They're on the site plan, so they can be approved and enforced, you know, as a site plan item. The four sort of zoning regulations having to do with auto service in any zoning, those notes are listed on the site plan. And a couple other notes, one of them including screening the lighting. Again, when we came onto the project, there were lights on the property. Those lights had actually sort of been added by the applicant before we did the topography. And at least at the December 8 meeting, they didn't have the cutoff screening on them. So, and obviously, we've added a note that they'll be cut off and screened. So, you know, with that, I'm certainly available for any more questions or any more discussion, but I think we've changed the plan to reflect the comments from last month, and we respectfully would ask that you would approve so that he could move in. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yeah, just a couple of background notes about the Class A non-conforming use process, and then some site plan comments. This, as Mr. Snyder correctly notes, the site Zone C1 has been occupied by a non-conforming building for many years. You know, the whole theory behind non-conformers is we want them to go away and be replaced by a conforming use. The challenge with this site is it's a building that doesn't necessarily lend itself to conversion to a typical C1 use. So in that case, the ordinance provides an opportunity for applicants to come in and expand the range of, or expand a non-conforming use with some conditions, recognizing that sometimes it's better to do that than leave a building vacant. The only remaining site plan comments we had deal with the remaining lighting issue. The lighting has to be shielded in a way that doesn't create a nuisance for the neighbors on Crawford. There's a comment about access to fire hydrants from the fire department, and two remaining comments from our engineer, one relating to dumpster access, the other to remove the parking blocks. And the last comment that's probably worth noting is there's, I think there are a couple fairly poorly maintained accessory buildings on this site, and any approval should probably also stipulate the removal of those buildings. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I do believe they've met the requirements for that Class A status, and I would support this request.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Before I turn it to the other board members, an issue I raised when you were here before was my concern over, you know, at what point do we need to hold property and zoning accountable to what our ultimate intention is? And the fact that, you know, this is no longer is, you know, depressed by infrastructure. And, you know, the township and the county and the state have put a lot of money into expanding Van Dyke, and I think provided the opportunity for a C1 to be a lot more successful in that location than it was previously. And, you know, we allow these, at least my understanding is, we allow these non-conforming uses to, you know, to let condition catch-up properties, sort of, conditions allow properties to catch up to the zoning as they're intended. And I don't know frankly what much more we can do. I mean, I have no issue with this gentleman having a business in the township, and it sounds like, you know, it's a nice story, the father trying to, you know, get his son started and, you know, expand on a business they've already created in a community south of here. But as I look at what the intent of this is, I think, you know, we need to sort of hold firm and, you know, and cause the landlord to actually develop and use the property as it's now intended. But that's just, that's my opinion, and now I'll turn it over to the board for any other questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I would agree with that. The ideal, obviously, the ideal thing would be to tear it down and put something there that meets the ordinance, and I know that sometimes that's not possible. We have to work within the confines of what's there. I'm glad Mr. Nguyen mentioned those auxiliary buildings, because it notes here that they're going to be repainted. I was out there on Saturday, and those buildings are in bad shape, and if you paint them, you're still going to have nicely painted bad buildings that are in disrepair. I think the applicant had mentioned that he wanted to turn them into little cott, make them look like little cottages, but I'm not sure what you can do by painting the buildings. And I do think that they need to come down, and I'm not keen on this whole plan, but I do commend the applicant for taking a building that's 50 years old, trying to make something out of it to enhance the entrance to Crawford, because if I look at that building, I'm not sure that's something I'd like to see as I drive into my house on Crawford. But if we can do something to make it better, that's commendable. But I'm just, I'm torn on the whole, on the whole plan personally. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the board? I knew there was participation from the public at the last meeting. Is there anyone here that wishes to comment on this?
Jeanette Kowalski, 8225 Crawford. My residence is technically four residence lots behind the proposed site. In actual reality, it's the third house. In relation to, not to rehash everything we rehashed last month, looking today at the new proposed site, the green belt that's in there, I guess my best words are, good there's something, but not too happy with the results. When you look at their arborvitae, is there stipulations as to the maturity of them? Is he going to be able to go out and get one-foot arborvitae, and eventually, they'll grow in the meantime to catch up to the six-foot fence? Eight and 18-inch shrubbery that's going to go there compared to a six-foot fence, it's almost an embarrassment to the neighborhood to think that this would pass as a screen to this type of building. As far as the hours of operation, I am gravely concerned. 7:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. 7:00 a.m. on Saturday till 1:00 p.m. on Saturday. I have a three-year-old, and if I hear impact wrenches when they're changing tires, the zup-zup noise going off at 7:00 a.m., I'm not going to be very happy. And I'm sure each and every one of you in your homes would not be happy to hear impact wrenches going off three doors down at 7:00 a.m. in the morning. You know, noise pollution is a huge concern, and it's not just myself, it's our neighborhood. And having these people, last meeting, a gentleman spoke about how close, I mean, when you're looking at the schematics, it's probably an illusion to exactly how close this is to our home. It's very close. In the summertime, when noise was happening down there, it was a nuisance. Inside my home, air conditioning going, and I could still hear them. Now, we're going to put a business in there with more noise? I'm not against a business going in there by any means. What I'm against is the type of business that we're putting in there. At this point, at what point is our township going to stand up and take a stand? As the chairman said, we've invested millions of dollars on Van Dyke, one of the most sought-after properties in Macomb County at this point. And we're going to lay down and let them come in here, and we're like, okay, we'll give them a variance. At what point do we stop giving variances and make them conform to what it should be? And I know there's the whole accounting purpose where, is it better to have a vacant building or somebody in there? Well, at what point is it going to be better to take this industrial-looking building and make them conform? Yes, it was raised last time that there was a, that we could potentially have a worse business go in there, but we have a great potential to have a better type of business backing up to our residential area. You know, there was like talks of coffee shops and such. We could have them put a strip mall in there and have a dentist at the end, which would be far less noise, far less the storage of vehicles and such that we would have to look at coming down Crawford. One of our big concerns is the sellability of our homes, the resale value. When you turned down Crawford, as you said, you know, Mr. Turner, you seen that it was an industrial-looking building. It is not the prettiest thing to look at, and you can slap a coat of paint on it, but it's still an industrial building. So at what point are we going to beautify Shelby Township and make them conform? And I just think that we could put a, we could make a better choice of the type of business that we're going to put in there. I'm sure we can put a quieter one, one that's more conforming, and I think it's just time that we put a stop to always giving variances and make them conform to what the actual master plan says for that area. Thank you.
Okay. So anyone else wish to comment? Okay, back to the board. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Nguyen, there was a notation that there'd be two-week storage time limit, no outside storage of parts or equipment, you know, vehicles, because they're out there for two weeks. Who would enforce that, and how would we enforce that? Would we have people driving by marking the car? How would we enforce something like that?
It would be done on drive-through inspections by our code enforcement officer, probably related to a complaint.
Okay.
Any concluding thoughts?
If I may?
Sure.
Really, you're faced with the option of, hey, let's not let anybody in there and leave it blank, vacant, and let it decrepit, grow old, die. Take your chances on whether that's a year, two, three, five, or get someone in there who beautifies a little bit. They're not going to make any improvements. It's not like they're trying to, that building is an industrial-type building. It's not like you're going to get a barber shop, or an office, or a coffee shop in that building. That building needs to come down. The site's only an acre. There's really not a lot you can do with that site by itself. You really need to combine it with other properties to the north, where Marv's Auto Electric, which is also a non-conforming use in that zoning, and has been for a while, and was approved by this body. You're going to have to, you're going to have to combine those pieces and really do something. Yes, I think the market's going to suck that stuff up pretty quick, because, because I don't think my applicant's prepared to pay as much rent as that property's really worth. But right now, you know, you're faced with letting the market make that adjustment, or just leaving it vacant and saying, no, you can't move in. That's really the choice of any non-conforming use to a township. I think this is a good use as a holding pattern for a while on that building, so that it doesn't really, really look bad. In terms of property values, I mean, it's fairly straightforward. That building's been there longer than I've been alive, a very long time. I think that that particular building and the fact that it doesn't look good is sort of baked into the land values in that area already. I think everyone would like it to look better. I think I'd like it to look better, but I think we need to let the market determine when that is, rather than just saying, hey, nope, not going to do anything, let it just look ugly until it's ready to be bulldozed. Because if you don't let a business in, that's probably what you're going to get. So it's just something to think about. You know, everybody can look at me and say, he's just saying what he needs to for his applicant, but I really think this is true. You have a good applicant who's a township president, who you can put in that place and have it look nice, make some improvements, know it's not the greatest, but it's better than leaving it vacant. So with that, again, any questions you may have?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question for Mr. Nguyen. Mr. Snyder mentioned that that, that the property, the way it is, the size of it, there is nothing else that can be done with that? Is that true?
No, I would say there's nothing else can be done with it, but I think the building and the site lend itself to certain reuses more than others.
So that the property itself, if somebody else were to come in and say, we want to tear it down, put something else there, that can be, there is other things that can go there?
I think the property lends itself to a whole range of applicable activities. It's the building that I think gets in the way of that now, absolutely. And, you know, Mr. Moffett's points are well-taken ones. I mean, it gets to the heart of this.
Mr. Snyder mentioned the market. Well, I mean, we're artificially, you know, repressing the market by allowing a use that shouldn't be allowed to continue to be allowed. So, I mean, there's an argument on that side, too. Okay, is there anyone else? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Moore.
I move to deny the class non-conforming use application for Snappy Auto Service at 56114 Van Dyke based on the following finding. The proposed use will adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood, and according to our ordinance, in the spirit and welfare of the public health, safety, welfare of the residents.
Mr. Moore.
Okay, moved by Moore, support by Bernardi. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner Vier?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
And the chair will choose.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Vier, I think that's the quietest I'll ever hear you. All right, next, we have a rezoning petition, number 10-14. The Charter Township of Shelby, 56481 Mound, parcel number 23070520015. Madam Secretary, would you read the notice?
Charter Township of Shelby, notice the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following amendment to the zoning map. Applicant: Charter Township of Shelby, 52700 Van Dyke. Shelby Township, Michigan, 48316. Rezoning requests: Light Manufacturing to R12. Multiple-family low-rise. Location: 56481 Mound Road, west side of Mound, south at 26 Mile Road. Sidwell number 23-07-05-200-015. Legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, January 12, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke. Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the rezoning application. The application for rezoning, zoning ordinance text and zoning map may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on December 24, 2014. There were 211 property owners, nine utilities, and one applicant were notified on December 22, 2014.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, did we receive any correspondence on this?
We did, Mr. Chair. We, in fact, this evening, from a Tom and Kate Tasky on Francesca Lane, and they're basically for the rezoning.
Okay, thank you. The format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for the rezoning. The commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. I'll then open up the floor to the public, and then allow the petitioner to make concluding remarks. Seeing as the township is the petitioner in this case, I'll call on Mr. Nguyen as its representative.
Chairman, this is a bit of unusual that we're here representing, or really presenting this on behalf of the township. Let me lead off, and then maybe Mr. Kirk can come in and offer some other supplemental comments as it relates to the whole, I guess, oil and gas drilling issue. The township initiated the rezoning application for this 19-acre site on the west side of Mound Road, south of 26 Mile Road. It's a triangular-shaped site that the western boundaries, Macomb Orchard Trail, and the ITC Electrical Corridor. The site's fairly wooded. There's one single-family home on this site. There's a potential wetland in the southwest corner of the property, and a drain crosses the site midway between, almost crosses the site in half. The zoning to the north and south on the east side of, west side of Mound Road is multiple-family. You have vacant property at the intersection of 26th and Mound Road, which is zoned R7. Directly to the south, you have the Stony Creek Apartments. That developed site is also zoned multiple-family. If you look at the master plan illustration, the site's located in an area of township that's planned as an industrial improvement area. There are several of these on the master plan, and they're generally older areas of the township that have a small enclave of industrial. In this particular area, all of the industrial in this area, the township's on the east side of Mound Road, not on the west side of Mound Road. So there's no industrial on this side of the road. I don't know that, I wouldn't say that the site is particularly well-suited to industrial based on that zoning and development pattern. It almost looks as though Mound Road is the logical dividing line between industrial on the east side and multiple-family residential on the west side. And I believe that change would encourage a more uniform and consistent development pattern in that area and avoid the potential for nuisances when you have industrial in close proximity to residential. So I think there's sufficient justification for the change in zoning, and I've offered a recommendation supporting that.
Okay. You made reference to drilling and the like, and I know that it's an issue, and it was an issue, may continue to be in another area of the township. We've been presented with no information regarding that and this site. And maybe it is appropriate for Mr. Kirk to address that, too. Now, is, in either classification, is that appropriate for those districts?
I think the question may have come up maybe as to whether would the industrial zoning allow for some processing of mineral resources on this site? And the way the ordinance is structured, it doesn't list those, but it's certainly, the site would be more vulnerable if it was zoned industrial than if it was zoned residential. So I think this is more of a precautionary move to clean up the zoning and also prevent that opportunity from occurring. I mean, I guess I'd rely on Mr. Kirk to, if that's appropriate conclusion.
I would agree. It's my understanding, in the thought of processing in that area. I've looked at the LM district. I don't think that processing belongs in that district, and I think when the township looked at that, they looked at this site, and the way the property's developed around it with regard to residential and the industrial, and set up Mound, that's why they elected to take this step, too.
So you're saying that's not, so the issue, the issue, the reason the township is initiating this is because of the surrounding development?
Well, I think it's the concern that it could be used for some sort of processing of oil and gas resources.
So that it's open within our zoning to allow for that?
No, I'm saying, we don't, I think we can make a case that it's not allowed in light manufacturing, because it's not specifically listed, but I think it's even clearer to make the case that it's not allowed in residential.
Okay.
So by changing the zoning, you put it in a position where I think it puts us in a firmer position to say, you're not allowed to do that on this site.
And why not go through, I mean, typically, how do we rezon property within the township?
Typically, some, somebody comes to the counter of an application.
But if the township, I mean, the township initiating, isn't, I mean, isn't it generally done through, through the master plan and?
Well, the last time we really, we initiated some large-scale rezoning was back in 1997, maybe Mr. Turner remembers. We adopted a new master plan, we adopted a new zoning ordinance, and we initiated maybe 100 different zone change. Typically, that's how it's done. But I think in this case, there were some, some other pressing needs that we felt that we would protect the residents' interest by introducing this change in zoning and not offering any opportunity, or minimizing the opportunity that the site could be used for some mineral resource use in the future.
Okay. I do recall, there was, there's reference in the materials that we received that indicated that the landowner, the property owner, had expressed a desire for, to rezon this. Is that, is that true?
I think there may have been something that was presented to the board at one time, but he never made application. That's why it was initiated by the township.
Okay.
So it was never followed through?
All right, so we don't know what his position is, or?
I don't believe he's here to represent it, so.
All right. Okay.
And I think, Mr. Kirk, I think that summarizes why we're here and why we're doing this. And I think coincidentally, the master, you know, the way that we look at the development pattern in the area, I think you can make a pretty compelling case that the line between the industrial and the residential should be along Mound Road. This site's an odd shape, that triangular shape. You don't see much industrial developed that way. People develop industrial projects, they want rectangular sites that can ease, get, you know, good access around the building. This site isn't, isn't a great candidate for industrial. You know, we're encouraging economic development's community. I wouldn't take somebody out to that site, here's a good candidate that we want to put your factory on, even without, with other issue aside. This just isn't a really good industrial development site.
Okay. Anyone questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vier?
Mr. Nguyen, you've written here that an ITC power line corridor is also located along the western boundary?
Yes.
And a county drain crosses the site, and there's possible wetlands on the site. Is that true?
Yes.
Would that, would that keep the landowner from more development in there if he wanted to go to an R12 as the township has asked for?
I think.
Could that lessen his ability to put, fully use his property?
Yes, I think under any zoning classification, it would limit it.
Has the site been looked at as far as what this means in the development scheme of things related to the three items that you've written up on the site features?
No, I don't believe so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask, I know that anyone with $100 and the ability to get to the court can file a lawsuit. However, does this open the township up to any litigation?
Anyone can file a lawsuit. I think there's a great basis here on the rezoning with the way the property's developed around it, even with the wetlands. I mean, those features can be incorporated into a residential type of development, more than an industrial type of development. So I think there's some good grounds here for rezoning.
In other words, in your view, there's no ground for litigation? I didn't hear you.
It's $120, not 100. It's $120, not 100. Certainly, there could be, Mr. Viar.
There certainly could be litigation.
There could be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
Mr. Nguyen, as I look at the plan, we have R7 to the north going to 26. We have R7 to the west. We have R8 below it, and I'm assuming south of that would be R1B residential. Is that correct?
Yes.
And here, we're talking about putting R12 in the middle of 7 and 8. Does that make sense? Does that break up the development pattern? And another point about what Mr. Viar said, we have wetlands, a county drain, and an ITC easement. Are you going to then jam more buildings in a smaller parcel if you go to R12? And who came up with the R12? Was that the township's designation?
I think that came from the board motion. But you raise a good question. In some ways, the number is, I wouldn't say irrelevant, but not as relevant because of those characteristics. Because the, our designation, the number means how many units per acre they're allowed. It's how much they're allowed, it's not how much they're entitled to. You have setback requirements, and it's, and the shape of the parcel all would serve to dampen it. I would suggest that the ultimate yield here would be far less than 12 units per acre just based on those characteristics, Mr. Turner. But that's, that's the right question to ask.
So it would be, even though it says R12, it would be more in line with an R7 or R8? Because it seems like it would be out of sync to go 7, 12 and 8.
Yeah, I think, I think that's probably would be the case. And it also depends what kind of unit they would put there. Again, they're limited to three stories. So putting that in there, you know, it's, they're going to be, the buildable area in this site is reduced to begin with, and perhaps that higher R designation accounts for that.
I just didn't want to get into a situation where because of the higher count and the smaller buildable area, they jam more in there to get that.
Because they still have the internal setbacks they have to deal with, which are consistent. So I don't believe that would be a problem here.
Okay, thank you.
You just throwing a bone to the property owner?
Well, I don't think it was done that way, but I think in retrospect, it works that way. I don't think that was the intention. It was just to, you know, and I don't think we really, it was analyzed, what's the right number here? But I think it does account, helps at least reflect that, those constraints to this parcel.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner? We'll start with Daven.
Mr. Nguyen, the multiple resident that we're trying to create here, if the property get to be sold, I'm very sure the township is not interested in building any residential in there. If we sell it, does that go through a different system, or?
The zoning runs with the property. If somebody else were to sell it and a new person buys it, it's still the same.
The township has no ownership-
Yeah, we don't own this property.
Okay.
Suggesting a, a new use, a different use, actually.
I have a question, Mr. Chair, from Mr. Nguyen. So by changing the zoning, we're ensuring that it would be impossible for them to put the processing center there?
No, I think we're saying we're limiting, the zoning then limits that potential even more because you get to the residential district and the range of uses are more limited to residential. It doesn't open that up to something else. I mean, that, that's an issue that somebody may challenge us on, but that's, you know, I think we're saying we're limiting those possibilities by zoning it residential.
Chris Alley?
Yes, thank you. I guess this is for Mr. Kirk, and based on what Mr. Viar asked, is it, I'm simplifying it, is it within our jurisdiction to rezon a property that's privately owned?
Yes.
Okay.
As Mr. Nguyen said, it's done, been done numerous times. I know, he said 1999, there was a lot of parcels, but through the years since then, we've probably had a couple since then, two or three.
Maybe a couple. It's a rare occurrence. It's not something that happens on a regular basis.
Nor does that mitigate the chance of lawsuits, right?
No, it doesn't, Mr. Viar.
There's another reason we don't do this is, I don't like being the applicant here. I'm not real comfortable with being the applicant.
Are we, are we going to do this to other light manufacturing locations?
I don't think so.
Was there, was there something that precipitated this? I mean, is there, you know, a smoking gun, as it were? I mean-
No, I think it's, it's the, it's the concern that was expressed regarding the drilling activity in the northeast west corner of the township and whether this site would lend itself to supporting that activity.
Have we looked at, are there other sites of the township?
We haven't, we have not looked at that. I think the other industrial areas, if you look at some of the, like the industrial areas on 23 Mile Road, they're part of a larger area. You might find, more likely find a space that could accommodate that without the exterior impacts it would have in this residential area. So, you know, if we haven't got, you know, haven't had any proposals for that anywhere else. I think the feeling was this parcel was a little more vulnerable, based on its location.
Okay.
Bob, is that a fair?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this rezoning request. Your remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. The Planning Commission is a recommending body. The Township Board will take into consideration these comments when making the final decision on the rezoning. At this point, if individuals can come up and ask any questions or offer their comments, we just need your name and address for the record. You need to come up if you have, if you want to. And you need to sign in there. There should be a sign-in sheet.
All right, thank you. My name is Chris Reinhardt. I live at 5628 Francesca Lane. I represent the Prescott Woods Homeowners Association, a neighbor of Tom and Kate Tasky. So it sounds like we're here to represent what was already said, but we're in favor of the rezoning. We are a small but hopeful neighborhood that you would represent us not to have a processing plant built, you know, a quarter mile from our, from our newly-developed sub. So we have West Bay, who came in sometime last year and started drilling, I think it was for natural gas. And I think that's what precipitated this proposal.
Oil or gas?
Oh, okay, oil. Sorry, stand corrected. So we have this, we have this drilling, and I think that is what precipitated this proposal, was that there was an amount of mileage needed before they could put in a, or there was a distance that was called out for where a processing plant could be put from those wells. And everyone started to guess on where that would be. And looking at the map and looking at where the utility corridor ran, that was a susceptible spot for this processing plant. And I think that's where this, I'm guessing, but I think that's where this all started from. So if we have this, this piece of property that's, that's susceptible to being built on, we'd like the township to get ahead of it, rezon it, so that it wouldn't, would be that much less likely that we would have a company like West Bay coming in and building a piece of industrial building on there that would be not necessarily pleasant to live by.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Hi, Denise Demack, 56163 Ashbrook Drive, Shelby Township, Michigan. I have to agree with the gentleman, Mr. Moffett. You know, we have this 1960s patchwork zoning that has kind of stood around for a while because things kind of, you know, from 2008 to 2011, 2012, kind of stood still. And Shelby Township has been, throughout the years, spent so much money in really growing and improving, you know, our township for a great quality of life for people. And I think it would be nice to not only look at this area, but other areas, and look at more progressive, you know, more, what do we want of our areas? How do we want Shelby Township to grow? And how, what do we want it to become? And to have more uniformity. And I think Mr. Nguyen talks about that, you know. There's a lot of now residential area in there, probably back in the 60s and 70s when this, how long ago was that zoned LM, do you think?
We'll, we'll, we'll take all the questions in the-
I just was wondering, because like, I don't want to give 1960 or 70 if it's really 1990, but just to say that, you know, to keep it LM because it's been that forever, it doesn't make sense. I think that the township and the zoning board has to look at areas now and say, you know, what makes more sense? What's, what's happening in the areas? How can we get more uniformity and what is best for our residents? To the young gentleman there, you do realize, even though if it goes residential, that there could be an oil well there that doesn't stop that process. So just to let him know that. And if this was, I'm hoping that you guys keep on improving our quality of life and for, for our residents here, and that's what your job is. So thank you.
Hello, Debbie Hannon, 2310 Hawthorne Drive. I just want to be one of the numbers to also say, please rezon this to residential. We do need to do what we can to impede any progress toward developing oil and gas in this area. So I appreciate what you can do. Thanks.
I got a football game I want to watch tonight, so if I get a little impatient at some point, you'll know why.
Hi, I'm Erica Mazzurri, and I live at 5692 Fieldbrook Drive, also in Prescott Woods. Just also want to stand up here to support the rezoning. We have a neighborhood full of small children, and it's concerning to think of a processing plant less than a quarter mile. You know, and I feel that if the drilling kind of got in under the radar, and we have a moratorium right now that we don't know if it's going to hold or what's going to happen. So if the township can get ahead of West Bay and put a halt to a potential processing plant in the township, I think that hopefully the board can take some action on that and rezon this area to protect us all.
Mr. Nguyen, you know, do, is there, is there any, I mean, reference of a processing plant? Is, is there any, has there been any indication that that, that's a possibility at that site?
Not, not at this time, no. Nothing has come to the counter.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's what we've all heard.
And that's, and that's what we're trying to figure, you know, that's, okay. And by the way, I live actually closer to that site than you guys do, so, just so you know.
Okay, okay, well, thank you.
I'm not insensitive to it. Mr. Viar?
I'd like to ask the planner, who brought this petition?
Came to the town, from the Township Board.
Okay.
I mean, the motion came from the board.
No, who, who brought the first to the board? Who brought the petition to the board?
You mean, who brought the idea to the board?
Pardon?
Nobody, there was no, I mean, I-
There was a request for rezoning to the board, and it was kicked back to the Planning Commission. My question is, who brought the first petition to the board?
I think it was Mr. Huth that suggested that this was an option that we should consider.
Mr. Huth brought a petition?
Well, nobody brought, nobody, there was no petition. I think it was a suggestion that this was a method that we could use to deal with it, but there was no application actually submitted.
There was a request to rezon to the board.
No, there was not a request. The board initiated that.
All right, so there was a motion, then someone made a motion at the board, so?
Yes, that's where it came from. I think it was discussion at the board level that we could do it this way, and it should, the Planning Commission is a place where that process starts.
Are you telling me that Mr. Huth brought it?
Mr. Huth made the suggestion, and I think at that process, there was the-
And who, who took it forward from Mr. Huth's suggestion?
Our department took it forward.
You took it from Mr. Huth and brought it forward?
Well, no, it went, it was discussed at the board, at the board, there was a board motion to recommend, to send this to the Planning Commission.
That was after the fact.
Oh, that's what brought it here.
I ask you, who brought it to the board?
Well, I don't know who brought it to the board.
It can't go to the board.
Pardon?
A rezoning request doesn't go to the Township Board of Trustees, it comes here.
I'll get, I'll get an answer.
All right.
Hi, Laura Crumpa, 2528 Hawthorne Drive, South. Just to clarify, because I was at the meeting, it was Nino and Michael Lachurco who came and requested, I believe they came and saw you and Mr. Stathikas.
I wasn't part of that meeting.
And they made a verbal request that the township rezon it to residential. And there was also an email sent by their attorney. It was, this was all, I think it was the December meeting, November meeting? It was one of the meetings that we did attend, and it was a request put in through. And the Lachurcos did attend that meeting. And, and after that point, they were supposed to fill out the application, which they never did. And then when they didn't fill out the application, Mr. Huth then, I think at that point, he said, this is something that maybe we can do on our own. I, I kind of think that's the way the chain of events went, and I'm sure it's all documented in the, in the minutes of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew Jarris, 2632 Hawthorne Drive. I live right down the road from Mr. Huth.
That doesn't get you anything.
Basically, as the chairman says-
Our sympathy.
We're depressing our market, you said earlier in your comments. Mr. Nguyen, yes, this is an unusual situation. And to firm, you said firmer, our position that a processing facility won't be there. I live 450 feet from the oil well. It's in question. Nino and Michael Lachurco are not representing themselves here because they have a vested interest with a signed lease on this property with West Bay. Whether or not, if this goes, here's, here's the first thing I want to make sure that you understand, is the citizens, many citizens of Shelby Township are not convinced that the board will do enough to represent us in the way that they've failed us already. Oil exploration has been going on, oil and gas have been going on for, for a long time in Shelby Township. Only until now, it's been going on very close into our, at our, our homes, and now it's causing an issue. It's causing an uproar. And I think that bringing this rezoning after the fact there's already a lease signed can open up our township to big gas and oil, and we're going to spend a lot of money in legal matters, as Mr. Viar has suggested. Do I want an oil well in my backyard? No. Do I want a processing facility in my backyard? No. Do I want one at 26 and Mound? No. However, if it was my land and you chose to rezon it without my approval and, and I already had an existing agreement with someone else, best believe you'd be hearing from my attorneys. So I don't want you to pass this. I don't want you to rezon it. Many of my Citizens Against Residential Drilling friends may disagree with me, but what's right is right. And West Bay will tell you that they ripped up a bean field and put the oil well there, and it was a great spot. However, they ripped up a road. You know there are already plans to develop residence there. So please don't allow our Board of Trustees to make this decision. Don't rezon it. Because at this point, the citizens have done everything for our township against residential drilling. Now, there are leases that are signed. There are some people who would like an oil well, somewhere where they can't see yet, they want to profit from it. But then where they, it has to be near them, or they can't profit from it. In the last year, we've been, I'm going to use the word bamboozle, and it sounds like a bad word, and it's intended to be a bad word, but we've been bamboozled by some landmen. Some people are ill-informed. A lot of our residents have now become experts in oil and gas drilling. Rezoning this property will not make certain that a processing facility won't be there. It's just going to frustrate the landowner. Maybe the landowner wants R12. Maybe that's just exactly what he wants. I'm not a fan of that, that landowner. Not a fan at all. Not a fan at all. So don't give him something, there's a reason why he's not here. There's a reason why he's not representing himself. I don't think you should do it. I don't, I don't think so, and the reason is, it's not, like I said, I don't want it there, but if it were your piece of property, why should someone else tell you to do something other to it? I guess I'll leave it at that. Again, the, I don't think our board should, our Board of Trustees should make more out of this, because this is a private matter.
I hate to break this to you, but whether we recommend approve it, disapprove it, table it, or whatever, it still goes to them to make a final decision.
Absolutely. I know, I know it does.
We just make a recommendation.
Absolutely, and that's fine, and that's okay. Like I said, there are other people here who are my neighbors. You just saw my next-door neighbor here, in Laura Crumpa. And we're all torn on this matter. But my feeling is, though you can rezone it, what's the reason to rezon it? You say, east of Mound is all industrial, and this unusual parcel is there. If that's the reason, okay, but please let it not be gas and oil is the reason, because I do think the attorneys would have a, it wouldn't be good, and I don't want to waste our money on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you sign in? Okay, good. Next, okay.
Hi, my name is Amy Baltnick. I live at 5648 Fieldbrook Drive in Shelby Township, a member of Prescott Woods Homeowners Association as well. And I'm just very confused, because this is my first meeting I came to, I wish I got to come to more, but if we're talking about this rezoning, and all of us have heard about this, and most of you in the room know about this, I'm wondering why you are the zoning board, why you guys don't have all of your background on what's been going on at the township meetings in order to go through this proposal? I don't understand, I feel like I'm in Bizarro World, I don't know why you guys don't know all the facts to why we're even here, and we're frustrated, because I'm so frustrated hearing what you guys have to say, and you guys being clueless on what we're talking about.
Well, there's a difference between fact and speculation.
Okay.
There's a lot of speculation going on.
Okay.
And so, I think a lot of the questions were to get to sort of the hard facts, because we're going to make a decision based on the facts that are presented.
So, there's been a lot of facts and a lot of paperwork from Rick Stathakis, I don't even know how to say his name. Stathakis, but I'm wondering, can you guys please get everything together before you make a decision, before you hear one person talk against the rezoning? Because I have three small children in that neighborhood, and there's a lot of potential problems because of oil drilling, and I'm really upset that you guys, I don't know if you guys understand that yet, and why we're all here. But there's a lot of oils, a lot of danger that goes into the land once there's oil processing. If it's a quarter mile away from my house, I'm worried for my children and my future of my children, so, and their health. So, please consider that. Please consider the rezoning.
Hi there, my name's Jennifer Panos, and I live at 55991 Ashbrook Drive East in Creekside Village. And I just want to clarify that we know for certain that there is a lease signed on the 26 Mile and Mound property. We know that. It's available through the Macomb County Registry of Deeds, if you want to look it up. So that is a for certain guarantee. The landowner is the same landowner that has the oil well behind all of our homes in Creekside Village, and there is no guarantee about a processing facility at 26 and Mound, but what is guaranteed is there is a lease signed at 26 and Mound. So everybody in Prescott Woods, or whatever it's called, please know that you're in almost the same position as we are, except you don't have the hardware. I wanted to say something different, but I'll keep it clean. You don't have the hardware in your backyard right now like we do. So, jump on board, Citizens Against Residential Drilling, and we can all stick together and help each other out. But these problems that our board is facing, as well as our planning commission, is all because of one greedy landowner in our community that has profited off of the building of homes and is now profiting off of the ruining of neighborhoods. And that I have a serious problem with. So, whatever you want to do with this property, that's up to you guys, but let's try to set a precedent that we are not going to allow this to go on any further in Shelby Township. Thank you.
I'll sign in after I'm done. Just, I also live, my name's Kurt Malow, I live on Francesca Lane, very close, as you've already heard. Just take a minute and express my view, and that is, I think it's right to state the facts. I think it's right to stick with logic. I think the planner did an outstanding job looking at the area, and if you really just take a drive down there and you look at how that area is set up for a planning board, I think you guys are actually doing the right thing looking at this. Again, a great job looking at the way things are zoned currently, and I don't want anybody to lose sight of the fact that everything that you've heard is what we've heard from similar meetings, and a processing plant there, there's times when at a processing plant, there's an exposed affluent flame burning off gases. That is no way right to have that anywhere near property that people live in. Thank you.
Mr. Kirk, would that be allowable even in a light manufacturing district?
The actual processing plant, whatever, isn't talked about or allowed in that district, and further, the light manufacturing district only allows uses that don't have any external effects outside of a building that would affect the adjoining property.
All right, all right, I'm going to listen to my attorney, and, all right. Anyone next? Anyone else? Going once? Going twice?
Mr. Chairman, before you close out, I'd like to ask a general information question. I know the lady came up and talked about West Bay having a lease on the property at 26 and Mound. Do you have any idea how many homeowners signed leases? Did a number of your neighbors sign leases? Did anyone in the area sign any leases? Doesn't that give some kind of tacit approval to drilling for oil if they signed these leases? How many?
Sixty.
Six oh?
Out of fifteen hundred.
All right, actually, I'm, all right, it's not a debate, and I get some latitude, because I know he did ask the question, but, okay, back to the petitioner for concluding remarks.
No concluding remarks.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Nguyen.
Okay.
There was a comment made, that this came from, that, you know, you're the petitioner, and that the township is trying to rezon this against the wishes of the landowner. Is that what's going on? Because I heard that, and is that what's going on here?
Well, the landowner is not the petitioner in this case, the township's the petitioner, and the landowner's not here offering any comments, one way or the other.
That's not the question he asked.
My question is, is if I own the property, and it's light manufacturing, and the township's not going to tell me that I want, that you're going to rezon this residential, is that what's going on here?
Yes. The township is the one who's on the application, not Mr. Lucherco.
Because I was looking at this differently. I was taking all of the processing out of it. I was looking at this simply as cleaning up the zoning pattern in this area.
Well, that's a justification from, I think, the planning justification for it, but it's really, it was initiated at the different level.
That's what I was looking at, this is that, this is shaped like a wedge, and you've got a light manufacturing wedge in between the residential. And just looking at it from a bigger picture, it would make more sense making that residential. But I'm concerned if the township's trying to tell a landowner what their zoning's going to be, if, gets back to what Mr. Vier mentioned about litigation.
Well, and just to answer your question directly, that's what we are doing. By changing the zoning, we are telling them, you're now limited to these range of uses.
I mean, the residential makes sense to me, but I...
That's the reason, but the backstory is, has, how this is related to the oil and glass exploration that occurred in that area of the township.
And it's likely the backstory that'll be litigated.
But that's, I guess that's the whole picture. You know, this isn't something that planning commissions have been involved with, it was always at the board level, because the state enabling legislation specifically says we can't establish zoning rules dealing with this.
Thank you.
It's an indirect way of addressing the question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Can I entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Support.
Support it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Our decision on this proposed use must be based, this evening must be based on the following: the practicality of this rezoning request and the effect on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use his land, do current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning, and is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan. We may recommend approval, disapprove, or table the request to evaluate the information further. At this point, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Turner.
I move to recommend approval of rezoning application number 1014, proposing a change in zoning for 56481 Mound Road, from light manufacturing to R-12 multiple-family low-rise based on the following findings. The change in zoning would provide a more uniform and consistent development pattern on the west side of Mound Road. The current zoning pattern in this area does not fully conform to the established development pattern. Removing the intrusion of LM District into a largely residential area minimizes the potential for nuisances that may be associated with manufacturing uses. The shape of the site may not fully lend itself to development for LM purposes, and other more appropriate zoned LM sites are available for development in the township.
Is there support? Going once, twice? Motion fails for lack of support. Another motion.
Chair.
More.
I believe at this time, we should table recommending, tabling this rezoning application 10-14, proposing a change in zoning for 5641 Mound Road, parcel number 23-07-05-200-015, from light manufacturing to R-12 multiple-family low-rise. At this time, to gather more information and hopefully have the property on here next time.
That was supported by Bernardi. Any question on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco.
Yes.
Commissioner Casali.
Yes.
Commissioner Vier.
Yes.
Commissioner Apone.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes to kick the can down the road. So, okay, we're, so, Mr. Nguyen, do we, actually, or Mr. Kirk, do we refer with no recommendation, or just, we don't send any recommendation to the board?
Well, yeah, I guess we could send it to the board with that way and let the board decide.
Okay.
That's one option.
It should automatically go to the board, shouldn't it?
It will automatically go to the board.
Go to the board without any recommendation.
Yeah, it'll go to the board. Yeah, it'll go to the board next.
All right, but they will get, they will get transcript of all the comments that were offered this evening, so. Okay, next item. An old business, an oldie but a goodie that keeps coming back. Site Plan 13-02, PUD number one, Richard Batt, Redwood Acquisitions. Is the petitioner here?
Good evening, Richard Batt with Redwood Acquisition. I'm here before you this evening, requesting a lot split on our already-approved project, already-approved PD. We are doing this for financing purposes only. We've already purchased a property, owned the entire site. We are just looking to split up our construction loan in two phases.
Okay, what about building? You're going to build it in two phases, or are you going to build it all at the same time?
We're going to build it in two phases.
Mr. Nguyen?
Just to kind of relate to the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance says all access has to be from a public road, so technically, they're creating a parcel that's landlocked. But from a practical standpoint, where you see that line drawn, it's just a line on paper, they have, the second phase will have access to the first phase. And our concern with this chipping, as long as there's some easement documents or some agreement, that this parcel, the second phase can't be sold off and block access to it, I'd be satisfied with that. It's more of, in my view, this is a housekeeping item, it's not a substantive planning item.
I mean, I guess, I was a little concerned in that, you know, you were, you know, allowed for develop, you know, I guess I envisioned this thing being developed all, you know, at the same time.
Sure, understood. We're growing very fast, company is, and this is really just a way of helping us manage our credit lines, more than anything else.
All right, okay, so it doesn't really, not so much impact your development schedule?
Oh, no, no, we're committed to this, we're excited about it.
Okay.
Raise for motion?
Sure.
Move to approve modification to the site plan for the Redwood Development Site Plan number 13-02, to permit phasing of the project. The approval is contingent upon the applicant providing a cross-access agreement to Phase Two that is acceptable to the township attorney.
Support.
Okay, moved by Vier, support by Apone. Any question on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Vier.
Yes.
Commissioner Apone.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco.
Yes.
Commissioner Casali.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, next, Greg Windingland, Lombardo Homes, regarding Devonshire Boulevard entrance. Is the petitioner a representative? Do I need your name and your address?
I can explain it too after you...
Okay.
Scott Windingland with Lombardo Homes.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe I can offer a little explanation. I've talked to Mr. Windingland about this. Devonshire is a planned unit development that was originally approved in 2006. It's the project at the northwest corner of Hayes and 23 Mile Road. Kroger's the only visible development that's occurred on that site right now. And Devonshire Boulevard is the main entrance into the site from 23 Mile Road, and they're planning some improvements, so, to the Boulevard that include some cross-access through the Boulevard to the new soccer dome facility that's being built on the opposite site. And what they want to do is allow people that are in that facility to cross over the Boulevard and into Kroger, so they don't have to go out the 23 Mile Road, take a left turn, and take another left turn into the site. And in addition to that, there's some signage and some lighting, so it's really a matter, it's just a minor housekeeping amendment, but I thought it was useful at least to let the commission see this. Again, it's a great idea not to have people go out on a 23 Mile Road. Kind of an integrated planning activity.
Anything you wanted to add? Nope. Mr. Vier?
Move to approve modification to the site plan for Devonshire, PUD, Site Plan number 06-44. The proposed modifications are limited to the entrance Boulevard to 23 Mile Road and are described in the letter from Lombardo Homes dated December 8, 2014.
Support.
Okay, moved by Vier, support by Moore. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Vier?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Apone?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco?
Yes.
Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck. Okay, next, under new business, election of officers. Okay, so we've got three positions this evening, first being chair, then vice chair, and then secretary. I'll open the floor and entertain motions for chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I move to nominate Jerry Moffett for chair.
Thank you.
Support.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any nominations?
I move the nomination to be closed, and I don't remember the rest of the...
Unanimous ballot cast in favor of Mr. Moffett.
By acclamation. Famous last words.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. What term limits you? Okay. Next is vice chair.
Mr. Chair, I move to nominate Lisa Casali for vice chair.
Support.
There's support, and support. Any other nominations? Go on once, twice. Move to close nominations, Mr. Vier?
I move the nomination to be closed.
Support.
Vote by acclamation. Congratulations. And then finally, secretary.
I move, or nominate Raquel Moore as secretary.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none. Motion to close? Acclimate, okay, and a vote by acclamation. Close the mo, close the nomination.
Yeah, move to close the nomination.
Unanimous vote cast.
Unanimous vote cast.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, Planning Director's report.
Two quick items, I know everybody wants to go back and see a football game. We had 25 signed applications last month, which I think might have been a record in terms of the number we processed, and one temporary use permit. More, more importantly, though, we, the 19th of December was a deadline for receiving requests for qualifications from planning consulting firms to assist us in doing the master plan, and we got six really good applications. And we had a, several of you volunteer or asked to participate in that process. Mr. Moffett, Mrs. Casali, Mr. Oppone, and Mr. Turner have agreed to kind of help vet these. And so I've given them copies of it. The idea would be, we would look at the proposals, spend a little time talking about who we might want to invite back for interviews. We might want to invite all six back to interview with the subcommittee. We did that the last time we hired, and it worked really well, and then presented a recommendation to the Planning Commission, and then onto the township board, but I think it's, it's kind of hard when you have nine people doing an interview. It's, it's awkward, and so it's a little difficult. So we thought that the four of us would do, or five of us would do that, and kind of vet those and bring them back. And it's a little different. We didn't get proposals with price-specific information. We got requests for qualifications, so we're getting the, you look at the qualifications, and then, once you select somebody, you can negotiate a scope of services to kind of tie into what you want, and then the costs associated with those services. So instead of just getting a proposal that says X, you know, you're not just taking a low bid, which may not be a good, a good fit for the township. And I've gone through the application of these qualify proposals twice, and they get better each time I look at them. So we're going to have some tough choices, but really good choices to make. So that'll be our big activity in this 2015, is working on the master plan.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the planner?
And I don't really want to be applicant ever again. Ever.
All right, with that, I'll entertain one more motion.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Board.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.